Welcome to our work session for August. Questions on the agenda?
The Louisiana trip by Blackman High School, that kind of caught my eye.
I guess that criminal justice class in it is going there.
I think that's a large camp too, isn't it?
What are you doing there?
Other questions on the agenda or the consent agenda? Donald?
Consent agenda, I believe. I made a note about the fourteen hundred dollars for special ed. My question is, how many people participate in that? Fourteen hundred dollars per day and ten days?
Where is it, Mr. Jergens? We told you.
Do you know what letter it is?
I don't know what letter it is.
F?
Mr. Dale, do you want to speak to that, please?
Yes, sir. It involves... We had probably about forty to forty-five in the training per session.
It goes throughout the year, just different days through the year?
Yes, sir. They'll come in and do initial training, they come back in and do follow-up where they go in and actually watch the EA or the teacher that's doing the lesson and work with them on that. They follow up that it's being done with fidelity.
While we get their sub, while they have a sub teacher.
For the initial training, yes, sir. We do.
I just, when I was reading that, I just wondered how many special ed teachers and assistants or EAs we had participated in that.
But we have it across the system. It's being used in all of our schools, all our elementary and most of our middle schools are all using the SRA program. And it's like sort of a double dosing type reading program to help them learn to read. It's very intense.
Thank you. Other questions on the consent agenda? Aaron?
The vehicles that we're getting here, are they kind of a normal replacement of some vehicles that need?
I believe, Garrett, we talked about some new employees, additional employees, some wear and tear, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Grant?
I did notice since he mentioned that, that the F-150, which is a lighter truck than the two F-250s, were substantially more. Are they all air con- with air conditioning or what's the difference?
One of them's four-wheel drive and some of the equipment on them.
Four-wheel drive with an extended cab on it.
On the 150?
On the 150.
And the other one's two-wheel drive?
Yeah, they're all two-wheel drive without an extended cab on it.
Other questions? Donald?
The contract with the dietitian. Twenty-five dollars an hour, I believe, is what that is. Is that for a... Do they normally work with a certain group of students on their diet or exactly? Is that an expansion of the, by law or what is?
Yeah, Jeff and Paula, she and I have talked about it. She's not here to speak to it, but we'll tell you what we know now if we need just some research.
And we may need to do some research, but just occasionally issues do come up where we need a registered dietitian. And we are able to run this through the coordinated school health brand for reimbursement from the state. But I think it is more individual issues that come up. But Ms. Barnes can provide more detail if not be needed.
When I was reading that, I made the assumption that if a student came to us requiring a certain diet or something, that this person would probably develop that.
Yes, sir. That is my understanding. Then work with cafeteria managers or something.
Working with the coordinator and the cafeteria manager.
Is that what we would have to do with someone who had like a peanut?
Yeah, we've had issues in different cafeterias across the county where we have to, where there might be alerts to peanuts and peanut oil and those kind of deals. And they're, they'll work with them to make provisions.
Yes, sir.
Cindy Boyd, Tennessee Virtual Enterprise International Program Director. Don't we pay Tennessee Virtual a fee to participate in that program?
We did. Cindy Boyd retired and now she is serving at capacity. You know, we don't pay benefits, retirement. And each school contributes to her salary, but she's kind of maintained or assumed the same position as I understand it, Jeff. Am I right?
As a retiree?
As what?
As a retiree. She was teaching two classes for us, I believe, and handling this program the rest of her day.
So now she no longer teaches and only handles the program. Can you explain real quick? Every school has virtual enterprise and doesn't fund to come in from other parts of the state to pay her salary?
Other states.
Yeah. So how, what are we out? Very little?
Actually, it's probably net savings to us.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because of retirement.
I thought we paid them and then they turned around and paying us back.
Under the terms of this, those other states wouldn't pay Miss Boyd or the services she performs.
Okay. Pretty slick if we get other states to help. So other states log on and do this program, is that?
Is Virtual Enterprise in all of our high schools now?
We have in all high schools Virtual Enterprise.
I believe every school has a Virtual. I'd say at some degree.
Sure.
And that book, is that a special ed or is that a big book?
Special ed book.
Isn't he the same one that has the contract with Genesis?
He did have a contract with Genesis. He doesn't give them that very much.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, number eight, we'll do Thursday. Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Number nine?
Application for extended learning program for 2011, 2012. Extended contract application allocation for the 2011, 2012 school year has been received. State will fund extended contract for 2011 and 12, using 2011, 2012, using state funds. Rough County's allocation is two-hundred twenty-five thousand. It's identical to the '09, 2010, and also 2010, 11 allocation. Tenth Contract Committee seek approval, submit the application using the same program parameters that Rough County's been using for the past several years. Those parameters in priority order are: one, summer school; two, school year remediation intervention programs; three, school year enrichment programs; four, skills training for enhanced potential step with Nissan. And we recommend that you bring that.
Okay. Questions?
That doesn't pay for all of it. That's just, that's just a maximum amount we'll be able to get, right?
It doesn't pay for the budget at all, the summer school anymore. Of course, we offset a lot of those costs with students paying it.
Other discussion or questions? Number 10?
We've got reflected here and I really, we've kind of rethought our position on this. But there's three separate requests for payments for weightlifting, summer weightlifting or time that really does it, from a school's perspective, does it pertain to their typical coaching duties? Like for example, Vern High School paid a weightlifting, the coach, head coach, two thousand dollars for working all summer in a weight program. There's one or two above it. Now, my question is, each of you has, adjacent to your computer, a financial matters sheet that I've put there. And it reads, we request the board to allow the director of schools to authorize supplemental payments for athletic summer work, summer camps, supplemented volunteers, and other supplemental pay issues that may arise. So authorization will cover payments made through the school activity funds, booster club, PTO. This approval process will let us ensure that these payments are in accordance with Title IX gender equity rules and IRS rules for both employees and independent contractors. Have you got a copy of that form yet, Angel, that we put together? Did you make one for everybody? Could you just kind of read over what's on the form?
I can.
Angel, will you come up in front, please?
What we have so far, this would be sent to all schools. So each school that requests a supplement would submit a form telling us the name of the school, the date they've submitted the request, the coach's name, social security number for purposes of payroll, if they are faculty or volunteer coach, what sport they're for, the amount they're requesting, and a description of why they feel like the supplement needs to be paid to the coach. And then there's some accounting information on the bottom, just about how to submit it for payment if it's approved. So that's what we have right now, based on the information we think we'll need in order to process them.
But, so you're thinking now is that it doesn't need to come before the board and you can just do it?
Yeah, that was my thought. I mean, it won't hurt my feelings either way for us to prove it. I mean, we will look over title issues. We'll make sure it's in line with what everybody's paying. I don't think we ought to necessarily regulate how much they get because we can't account for all the hours. But I mean, there has to be some discretion at school level and we can bring it to the board every time there's a supplement. But I don't know that y'all really wanted to have all in that or probably lends itself to a lot of, a lot of public discretion with respect to supplements. And I think everything will be legit, but I'm not the lead. I'd like for us to have the discretion.
Grant?
This in response to last month's situation where it hit headlines, made the headlines on several factors?
I mean, I'd answer that with there was, you know, there was protocol in place that clearly wouldn't be being followed. It was brought to our attention. I didn't know it wasn't being followed. I don't think anyone down here did.
This was a more safeguarded.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this, this, I mean, I think everybody's attention has been captured. And I think that this is just a good way to do business.
So the main question facing us, it seems to me, is do you want to delegate this to Mr. Gill or do you want it to come before the board? I don't know.
In the same area, I guess, what, if anything beyond the policies in place, are we looking at doing to ensure that these kinds of things don't happen again?
Any...
What kind of?
Angel, we had actually met today with some, with principals again. This is about the third time we've met one. And a separate organization makes sure that they were adhering to policy. But from now, henceforth, everybody, any, any person that does any, that's paid in connection with a T double S double A sport, if you volunteer and a booster club wants to pay you, you have to, that has to be approved by us. That form that we just spoke of has to be filled out. Secondly, now, if it's not a T double S double A sport, and I would assume that'd be what, Angel, banned, banned or something like that? They don't have to run it through that. They could pay those folks, but a 1099 would be filed so that that takes care of that issue. But I mean, what we're really, what we're trying to do is to ensure that, you know, things are done legitimately. And I think we've got things in place to do that. Now, Angel, why don't you step back up here and expand on what I said because you've kind of imparted in sort of personal ways, you and Jeff.
And could you, maybe it's obvious why we would say payments associated with T double S double A sports would have to come through central office, but the band would not. I mean, is it simply because it's a T double S double A issue?
Well, primarily because the volunteer coaches, you know, have to be approved through T double S double A or requires that. They also have rules related to supplements being paid to coaches. So to make sure that we don't have any T double S double A violations, we want all of those payments to flow through the Board of Education.
Can I stop you right there? One of the reasons there was, if you recall, we sent the, we self-reported the T double S double A, saying that there are five schools that acknowledge that they paid supplements. The reason we got off the hook is because someone knew at school level that someone was being paid, either athletic director or principal. So their perception of that was that the board had given those people the authority to do that. So we're kind of real men and we're going to say from here, we're, you know, we're governing that authority.
Why wouldn't you want to also know if a band director's being paid a supplement? I mean, I know it's not a T double S double A issue, but...
Well, for any, for anybody that's an employee of the, of the school system, those will run through us always. So if a band director is paid a supplement by the booster club or an educational assistant who happens to be an employee for the system is working for the band in some capacity is paid a supplement, all employee supplements will come through us. What we're saying for, for non-T double S double A, if it is not a, an employee, then the booster club can pay them directly and issue their own 1099 and then we would be provided copies of those. So the second, kind of the second problem of what we want to do is, one, make sure that we have protections in place to not have T double S double A violations for those fours. But two, to be able to produce the documents we need to produce to show whatever we need to show if we need to for an audit. So we think we've covered all of those.
So the change is really regarding volunteer coaches and I guess I didn't understand that. Okay. No, my fault. Questions or comments on that?
Yeah, just, just to kind of follow up. So what, what, if anything more is in place that will assure that these things happen?
I'd say the filling out the forms. We're putting together and we've already verbally discussed it with them. But it's kind of a working document. We're putting together guidelines that as Donald said in the paper, Mr. Jergens said, got teeth in it. You know, we'd say, hey, we've been over it, we've done this, this is the way we're going to do it. And I think they understand now that I, we're not going to tolerate, I mean, end of story. So with respect to your question, I mean, any kind of payment, they understand this form will be completed. The money will be sent back to the school, I mean, to the school board and we'll disseminate the check from here. I don't know what more you, I mean, what more you want?
Do, do we, I can speak to this before 2006 at Oakland. I don't know that I knew for sure exactly what booster clubs were even in operation there. Do we have some mechanism in place that assures us that a, a group of parents who are working in behalf of an organization for a school has gone through some process to let the principal know that we are a working organization to do that? Track booster clubs. I mean, I'm just guessing, I'm just guessing that some principals out there don't even know that there's booster clubs out there that are actually operating and they're not going to go figure it out and track people. They're probably dealing in fairly small numbers, probably small.
Two or three people.
All that kind of thing. Yeah, do we want to go out, we'd like to raise seven hundred and fifty dollars to buy some t-shirts. And that's a, in effect, a booster club that does that, they probably don't have an organization or anything in place. But if anybody's, if anybody is working to secure funds for the students of the school system, seems to me we've got to, we've got to at least know that they're out there and we recognize that there's a, there's a list someplace at every school. The principal knows that these people are sanctioned, I guess, to do that.
Yeah, and we've had that discussion and as, at some point we reported, there were over a hundred and thirty-plus booster club. But we have talked about that. Angel, you want to speak to what you see?
Well, I think as a part of this whole process, principals have done some investigating about what kinds of organizations are, just like you said, operating that may have not been, you know, had submitted all the proper paperwork and those things. What we've tried to do is to give them, have them to identify the ones that they do have in existence so that Mr. Sandvik can check in his department to make sure that those organizations have the proper paperwork turned in. They are supposed to be meeting with all of them to let them know fundraiser forms have to be turned in. If they turn in a fundraiser form and we do not have the appropriate paperwork, they will not be allowed to fundraise. If those things continue to happen, then what, what would happen is that we would, we would revoke their right to be a school support organization and operate in that name and not be able to do fundraisers.
That, that hundred and thirty number just struck me as being really low to what it would be because I would think a school like Oakland probably has fifteen or twenty.
I think Blackman has twenty in the high twenties.
And then you have middle schools now that fifteen years ago probably didn't have a lot of that. You had the basketball, that was probably about it. Now, I would think practically every sport, the, and the one to kind of keep in mind, I would think, in most of the high schools, the band booster club probably goes through a high, as high budget as any sport, maybe aside from football.
Absolutely.
Which, and, and take this opportunity to say, I think we all can agree, these people are doing it and that's a great service. They're wonderful people and we don't want to do anything to discourage people from doing this because the funding is in the millions, I'm sure. So we, we want to acknowledge that, but we do want to make sure that people recognize it. We just wanted, we just need to know. I don't think, I don't think that there's any real indication that the people out there willingly try to do things wrong. Very few, maybe, but, but we do need to make sure we got at least a knowledge of it. And I'm just concerned that that hundred and thirty figure couldn't possibly be right. I know there's got to be more than that.
You may be right. You know, and I, I wouldn't be surprised, for example, if, you know, two, two Latin classes at a school, three, four parents got together and say, hey, we're going to have a little car wash to raise money for the Latin club or this club. And I don't know how the principal tracks all that information down unless the teacher has good sense to say, hey, by the way, we got three or four parents going to have a car wash to do something, you know. Respect, they ought to submit a form, ought to do it the right way, but I suspect some of that stuff has going on and, you know, we're trying to get out of trouble.
On these, on these booster club payments, these supplements are being paid like if they're mowing the grass or doing the weightlifting. So the booster club is, is requesting this be paid for that coach for that effort. Is that basically correct? The school's not saying, well, we're going to give you this money. It's the booster club saying, hey, we want to give coach so-and-so this money.
Well, you know, I mean, first of all, the reality is somebody's got to take care of those fields this summer. They hadn't been supplemented, but we are going to come probably forward at the next meeting and ask that we add a supplement for summer field maintenance, for the ball fields. I'll let that cat out of the bag now.
Taking that out, like, like one of the assistant coaches or one of the volunteers.
But I think what probably has happened in conjunction with principal coaches, hey, we got to take care of the fields, you know, and this is beyond their normal hourly duties and had an arrangement maybe with, with the boosters to pay them something, which is totally reasonable. The only thing is they were working for the school system, wasn't run through the books.
And my other question is, sorry, having a senior moment here. I was paying so close attention to you. I forgot my second question.
Why are you thinking? If you guys don't mind, I'd like to tell you, we had it, if it's all right, it kind of pertains to this whole discussion. We had a meeting today. Jeff and I met with Mayor Burgess, Lisa Nolan, Sheriff Arnold, and two or three of his folks about security of ball games. And we've had security for years and we've been paying straight seventy-five or eighty-five dollars per officer. And I think they want us to now start paying time and a half, pursue it to, to maybe revisions in the law or something. But at any rate, that, that's probably what we'll have to do. And it'll be run through here. There'll be retirement paid, there'll be benefits paid. And it'll probably be about fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a year more than it'll cost each school for security. Now, you've been a high school principal. We've had discussions almost every other year on how expensive it is to run a program. You know, two years ago, we had, it used to be volunteer, it used to be a free service to the schools, ambulance service. When we started paying them, how much, Jeff?
Total eleven to thirteen thousand a year.
Yeah, to the ambulance service. And at one time, that was free charge. You factor in what we're paying now, we pay trainers. These programs are expensive to run, period. And another thing I appreciate, Mr. Jergens, because back when we played, when I played, you know, it wasn't anything. You played ball. I don't even remember an ambulance or a doctor being within ten miles. For whatever reason, maybe they think we were, we could, we were invincible, Donald. But at any rate, I couldn't help but think during that meeting today, it is, it costs a fortune to run these programs. And without booster club, we fall flat on our face. But we, this is the kind of deal, I don't know, I told Jeff, I don't know how we're going to pass this cost on to the schools. I mean, they're just, they're hurting. Yes, sir.
May I address a couple of Mr. Tackens' consent agenda?
Sure. There you go.
Sure.
Yeah.
One of the things that we're dealing with since you were at Oakland is state law changed. We now have some access that we by law did not have when you were principal. So these groups should be coming forth forward and we have been trying to get that word out. But the law changes what has driven along this.
Wait.
I remember my question now. All booster clubs have to have a board and that, and those funds flow through the board and not through the coach. Is that correct? Okay. Because I know in the past that a lot of times the coaches were the booster club and all the money went to the coaches and stuff. So that's problematic.
But we don't, I don't think we need to be real naive in recognizing that the coach didn't have a lot of say-so on what happens. And I know I had one parent made a very, I thought a very good point and I'm not sure how we necessarily address it. But when you're on that board and you've got a child playing on that team and the coach wants something done and you decide to vote opposite from what that happens, they're very concerned about, you know, what may be the fallout. And, you know, their concern was putting that parent in the middle of that situation. You know, we raised the money. The coach really is not the one that's supposed to decide where that money goes because it's raised by the board. But we all know, they're raising it because the coach has requested and that, we've, a lot of been coaches here. We understand that process. Coach knows best where that money needs to be spent. But if it doesn't go the right way, it can be, it can be very problematic and I think we just need to, like I said, I'm not sure where the answer to that particularly happens to be. But there is some real issue with putting parents in the middle of that situation about how it should be done.
But I think we have some oversight now with the principal that we didn't have before. Because as far as football, they, they have to report monthly, don't they, as far as what?
Well, we talked about monthly, we talked about quarterly. We're still tinker with the best way to deal with that. But we have told them and I think it was pretty interesting in our discussions with them. They said they would be personally, they were committed to checking it monthly to make sure everything was, you know, they were somewhat blindsided by this and pretty embarrassed by it all too, so.
Okay. Further discussion?
When so many of these examples are weightlifting, which most likely summer weightlifting, it's football, how do we possibly imagine that we're going to keep Title IX equality in place on these supplements?
What you do, weight limits, weightlifting's not limited to boys. Girls can attend. So that's...
So simply by making it available, whether or not they're there or not, that clears us?
For Title IX, yes. As long as it's, as long as the facilities are equally available to both boy's sports and girl's sports, it's not a Title IX issue. And what we understood from them in our discussions is that it's, it's open all summer to anybody who wants to participate, sports related, so.
Okay.
Going back to this, I, you know, we approved the volunteer coaches on the consent agenda. I would just like, I'd like to see whomever is getting a supplement. And therefore, I would, I'd feel more comfortable if it came, came before the board after due diligence has been done to, to see that if all the Ts are crossed, N's dotted.
And I don't think that'll be a problem because what, we've already come up with a new application for volunteer coaches that will tell us whether they are supplemented or not supplemented. If it is a supplemented, they will have to attach their approval form to that when the application comes in. So when we present the, the list to you, we can divide it into supplemented versus non-supplemented.
So I think your preference would be if, if they're supplemented, if they're supplemented by boosters or the school for any additional responsibilities beyond what we supplement, you'd like to be on the consent agenda? Is that okay? Fine by me.
Unlikely that we would ever overturn, is to be a little more transparent that way.
Because of the T double S double A requirement, are we issuing the ten ninety-nine on the volunteer coaches or is the booster club?
We will, once they're all run through payroll, right, yeah. So, and I mean, that's another reason why we want it to all run through the same process, so we know that everybody's getting them like they're supposed to.
Okay, Tim. I don't know that this is being done at all, but do we have policy in place that says that a person cannot be supplemented beyond what the board has approved? I'm talking about with outside money. In other words, if, if, if the.
I don't think it's written anywhere that we.
If the assistant coaches, is, is supplements thirty-five hundred dollars to be an assistant football coach, I mean, is, is it conceivable the booster club to pay some hot shot outsider more than that to? I don't think there's anything that restricts that, is there?
There's nothing written to restrict that. Now, that's why we want them to flow through here for approval, so that if that's happening, then we could certainly stop it at this level.
Be aware of it. I, I, I would, yeah, I would, I would just, I would not be in favor of seeing someone getting, from outside getting paid more than someone getting something.
A big part of that approval process is to maintain equality, you know, so that we can track how much is being paid for what sport and keep some equality amongst that. So if some are not really high and some are not really low, they're, you know, pretty even across the board.
I would tell you this, I think it's just because it's interesting, over the past several years, we've hired new football coaches when others retired or left or, and on at least two or three occasions, I, the principal would call and say, hey, we can't compete with such and such county or such and such school, and their booster club is willing to kick in an extra ten or twelve thousand dollars to get them as a head coach, uh, beyond what our supplement will pay. Can we do anything? And of course, my stock answer is no. We can't. So it's, it's, apparently, a lot of people value their football programs to the point where they're willing to do those kind of things. And I don't, you know, I don't know if we'll ever have to deal with that, where if such and such booster club wants to pay somebody ten thousand dollars, uh, for a guy's one to stake ten times in a row with another school, and what, which issue would be on doing that?
It sounds like right now there'd be no reason they couldn't do that, right? I mean, we, we would know about it, but we.
It would come through the consent agenda, I guess.
That's when we pull it off and deal with it, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm not comfortable getting into where the NCAA is, where you've got the football coach making more than president of the university. It happens more places than not.
That's going on everywhere.
I don't know that the football coach needs to be making more than director of schools.
Or the principal, just don't even go there.
Very restrained, Harry.
I was going to say, I'm proud of it, I, I went all the way to the top, yeah.
Okay, anything else on this? There's a lot of issues involved with this, aren't there?
Yeah, there are. And the big thing is, it, Tim touched on it, one party shot, not leaving long. Uh, he made a good point. A lot of people work tirelessly to support these schools. And, uh, you know, through this whole deal, I think we've learned from it, it's, uh, it will do better, but I don't think anyone ever intended to do anything wrong, or, they just had a little too much leeway, and I think we've kind of reined it.
The, the competi, the, the, one of the reasons athletics in Rutherford County is so good and facilities are so good, there's a great competition that takes place between these schools. I mean, I, I know, back when it was Oakland-Riverdale, as soon as Riverdale did something, Oakland felt like they had to do one up, and then back and forth. Well, now you've got Smyrna, Laverne, and Blackman, and all those schools, and it's just a great big circle, and people want their school to be the best, and so they're willing to go out there and make all this kind of things happen. So the competition has been, for the most part, healthy. But anytime you've got that much competition in place, I don't care whether you're talking about the athletes themselves, or the coaches themselves, or the boosters, or the principals, sometimes you're tempted to go a little bit beyond, and especially when you hear, well, the other school's doing such and such, whether it's happening or not, you almost just find in your mind, well, if they're doing that, we're going to, we're going to step across that line too. And I think the line had been crossed some places where other schools recognized that, and they don't want, they just want a fair playing field. And when somebody is perceived or, or actually getting unfair advantage by doing some of these things, that causes other people to do unscrupulous kind of things. I think that's where we are.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing before we leave this. Um, I don't know how you do this in work session, but I wanted to say, I think we should have the, this piece of paper on the agenda for Thursday evening as the recommendation, with the addition of the language that, uh, Mr. Jergen spoke of, that, uh, those volunteer coaches that will be supplemented are noted, and then, uh, tab addendums that are a couple of forms that Angel made reference to. If we've got that, I think we can go forward.
Okay, number eleven.
Rutherford County Executive Committee meeting, uh, Rutherford County Executive Committee had an emergency meeting on August second, two thousand and eleven, and approved the emergency purchase of one compressor for Laverne Middle School, one compressor for Segal Middle School. Bid was awarded to McQuaid with a bid of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for each compressor to be funded from the maintenance department funds.
A discussion on that? Information item? A general discussion.
I'd be interested in hearing an update on the bids. They're open today, and the impact that has, and where Stewart's Creek will be.
We, uh, had five bidders today on, uh, Eagleville School, and in light of the things that we went through on, uh, the last high school bid, we're currently checking and will be tomorrow on, uh, the state's licensing board to make sure that all the information, uh, on the outside of them, uh, envelopes were, uh, are pertinent and can, or if they need to be disqualified. Bids ran on phase two from, uh, two point seven up to four point five, uh, million. So, um, we're in the range that we had predicted on those, and once we get a decision, we'll bring that forward to the board. And of course, we need to know what the high school bid is also, so that we can give you the information to make a decision where to proceed with the Eagleville phase two or not. So, um, Mr. Gill and I discussed today that, uh, maybe next Tuesday, when we get the high school bids in, if we have time to get that worked out, that we would possibly have a special call and, uh, maybe get the high school bid and the Eagleville project, uh, approved at that time, so we could go forward with the Eagleville project to the, uh, Health Ed Committee, so it can proceed through the commission.
Yeah, and, and let me, since that was, since you brought that up, let me discuss this, and Jeff Reed probably ought to speak to it. What we had talked about was possibility of having a, uh, Tuesday afternoon, four thirty or so, special call meeting for approval of the Stewart's Creek bid, and then go on to Health Ed to advise them that we'd approve that bid, and talk, talk about the Eagleville bid, et cetera, probably approve the Eagleville bid that night too. Of course, my reservation was, you know, two and a half hours between when we approve it, we open it. I want to make sure we got all our, you know, uh, dotted the i's and crossed the t's. Do you think, can I, could you step up here? I mean, would you be able?
We haven't talked about this. Tuesday's pushing it, though.
I, I would agree.
I'd wait another day just to make sure. You don't know what issues are going to come up. We had all those issues come up with that other bid opening, which we did not anticipate. Uh, I think maybe Wednesday will be fine, but trying to get all that sorted out by, and within two hours, uh, might, might not happen.
It'd be tough.
Yeah. Which was just.
That's exactly my sentiments, and, and Mr. Clardy, I just want you to know, uh, you were wrong.
Wow. Under the bus.
The bus tracks, you just, you've just been run over. Okay, so forget to.
We can put it off another month if you want.
Yeah, that was the issue, right, trying to get it, health and.
Yeah, well, we wanted to, I mean, the Health Ed, I don't think has to approve it.
Not the high school.
Yeah, I mean, but we thought we'd have an opportunity, but at any rate, I, I think, uh, that would be wise to hold it off a day or two.
Other discussion.
I want to bring up, if we could, Angel, will you come back up here? We've been dealing with, uh, seventh graders have to have, uh, throughout the state have to have proof of, what, Angel?
Uh, they had, uh, start beginning this school year, they had up two additional immunizations, uh, before starting seventh grade. And that information was sent out to them last year in April, so that they had plenty of time over the summer to get it. We had a large number of students who came in this year that did not have, have them as they were supposed to. So we, um, gave them a deadline, gave them about a ten or twelve day period to get the shots in. Still had a significant number of students who did not have them at that point, so we extended it again until this Thursday. Uh, we're down to, I think she said, two hundred.
Two hundred and sixty-seven.
Two hundred and sixty kids that don't have it. Um, so we sent out an email to principals today, saying that if they do not have them by Thursday, they'll not be permitted to attend after that date.
Yeah, and, and.
They've had from April of last year till.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you understand, but we actually told them, last Friday was the deadline. We extended to, uh, to Wednesday, like Angel said. Now, we have done message, uh, we've used a messenger search, how many times? Three or four times? Principals remind them on a daily basis.
We've seen a letter home.
Sent letters home. We've done everything within our power to get these guys to, uh, these folks to turn in that immunization. They're not doing it. So this Thursday, we don't have any choice. Uh, you know, we've given them all their last chances, and if they hadn't, if it's not in by Thursday, we'll just have to turn them away.
Wayne.
These immunization, are they available at the Health Department?
They are, and actually, they've done mobile clinics at several places to make it more convenient, and we sent, sent that information out as well. So we've, we've done everything we can do to make it as easy and as convenient as we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Since our last meeting, uh, a number of us went over to the Summer Law Institute for TSBA, uh, Thursday night. If, if I could, I'll give a little report on those things, uh, and some, some things that we learned there. The other thing is that we're supposed to do a self-evaluation, uh, of the school board, and, uh, I was wondering, you know, if maybe this seemed like as good a time as any to start that process, that we kind of check ourselves.
I'd be happy to give myself an A plus, but if you need that.
We might need a second opinion. Joyce, remind me, or do you remember when we did this last?
Just before we got the board's decision.
Which was.
That's one of the requirements. It was about a year and a half ago.
It's in our policy, I think, that we do this, right?
Once a year. I thought maybe this time of year, early fall, and then that might lead us into another February, uh, you know, long-range planning. But if we kind of check it now, then we come back in February again and do some planning.
Well, we need to fulfill our own policy, I suppose. Any other member have a comment about this?
Well, I'm willing to go down to an A.
As I recall, it's a form, right, Joyce? I mean, there's, yeah, it's fairly painless.
Yes.
Self-evaluations go.
We're getting to the chairman.
Okay, we'll do that. Thanks for raising that, Eric. Other issues, Tim.
The nature of what we do brings more negative comments than positive, but when we get a, a, one, an unsolicited positive comment, I want to pass it along. I, I was contacted by fellow Realtor last, about two weeks ago, someone was moving in from out of state, uh, had contracted to build a home, was zoned for this school, because that's where they were renting, wanted to be in this school, so that the child, the two children would not have to be moved from here to there. And they just, they contacted me back to let me know that the process did work the right way, contract, the house was shown. They were allowed to move on, I think, they said a six-month basis to the, get a zoning exemption for that process, so that the children would not have to move into a different zone and, and, and all that kind of thing. So I just, it was really nice that somebody acknowledged that, sometimes things are done the right way for kids, and I felt that, I, I felt like that's what would happen, and it did, and I, I appreciate the fact that it did, and I appreciate the fact that they acknowledged that.
You put that in our self-evaluation? Other discussion. All right, and we'll see you Thursday night.